Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Alderman for May the 4th of 2020 to order. If you please recite the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we're having our Board of Alderman meeting via Zoom again this evening. And that does meet the requirements of the Missouri Sunshine Law. And it also is in accordance with an ordinance of the City of Harrisonville that allows us to meet in this format whenever there's an emergency. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for roll call now, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Miller. And Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Mayor Bowman.
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. The first thing we have this evening, we have a couple of ceremonial matters. I have a couple of proclamations to make. And the first one is for National Skilled Nursing Care Week, the week of May 10th to the 16th. It reads as follows. Whereas our community is stronger because we honor and respect our elders and citizens of any age with physical or intellectual disabilities, the resident skilled nursing centers in Harrisonville, Missouri. And whereas these citizens have made important contributions to the success and growth of our town. And whereas National Skilled Nursing Care Week provides an opportunity for our community to recognize the role of skilled nursing care centers in caring for seniors and individuals with disabilities. And whereas skilled nursing centers are holding events in observance of National Skilled Nursing Care Week, May 10th to the 16th, using this year's theme, "Live Soulfully." And whereas I urge all citizens to visit a loved one, friend, or neighbor being cared for in any setting and offer a kind word or personal touch to show your continuing support. Now therefore do I, Judy Bowman, rear of the City of Harrisonville, declare the week of May 10th to the 16th, 2020, as National Skilled Nursing Care Week and adopt the theme "Live Soulfully," our way of honoring all citizens who reside at a skilled nursing center or post-acute care center. We'll have the city clerk mail a copy of this proclamation to each of our skilled nursing centers in Harrisonville. And even though we can't go to the centers right now, I would certainly encourage the community to reach out and perhaps send a note or make a phone call to folks that are living in these centers. It's been a difficult time for them. And I know that they would appreciate any outreach from the community. The second proclamation I have is for National EMS Week. And that is May 17th to the 23rd. That proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Emergency Medical Services Week will be celebrated throughout our nation, May 17th to the 23rd. And whereas Emergency Medical Technicians and Paramedics provide critical services through first response, treatment, transport, prevention, and intervention. And whereas the quality care provided may affect the patient's journey throughout their course of treatment. And whereas these professionals may risk personal danger when entering unstable environments to deliver urgent and essential care, often under immense pressure and with little thanks. And whereas the Harrisonville Emergency Services Department employs professional firefighters who are also certified emergency medical technicians or paramedics. Now therefore, on behalf of the Board of Alderman of the City of Harrisonville, I, Mayor Judy Bowman, call upon all citizens of Harrisonville and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2020, as EMS Week and to honor these first responders whose bravery and selfless dedication have enhanced the quality of life we all enjoy. Chief Meyer, I know this year on the meeting, I want to salute you and say thank you to you and your staff for the things that you have done these past weeks. I know it's been difficult and you've conducted yourselves as professionals through each and every encounter. And I want you to know that as a community, we're grateful and we appreciate you. You're welcome. The third proclamation is for National Police Week. Again, more of our first responders. And it reads as follows. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 10th through 16th, 2020, as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Harrisonville Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Harrisonville. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department. And that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Police Department of Harrisonville has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, on behalf of the Board of Alderman of the City of Harrisonville, I, Mayor Judy Bowman, call upon all citizens of Harrisonville and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10th through 16th, 2020, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people rejoin in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Harrisonville to observe Wednesday, May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Chief Hofer, I know that you're in the meeting as well. And likewise, sir, I salute you. And I tell you how grateful I am for you and for your staff and what they do for our city. Particularly, I'm just going to pause for just a moment. And I'm just going to ask us to remember the police officer in Oakmont Park who just lost his life in this last day. Okay. Moving on then to public participation. Mr. Ratliff, did we receive any agenda requests for this meeting?
No, ma'am, no agenda request for this meeting.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. And I'll remind the board that all of our votes tonight will be roll call votes. So I'm looking for a motion then for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman of the April 20th.
May I have to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner, with a second from Alderman Davidson, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman for April 20th. Yeah, roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Thank you. Those minutes do stand approved. And at this point, I would ask you to please mute your cell phones if you have them. And then please watch the microphones on your Zoom screen. And mute yourself if you're not speaking. Moving on then to the agenda items. First is appointments, or actually reappointments, to the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Ratliff, do you have that? City Clerk, do you have that?
I can.
Thank you.
Actually, the second. Mr. Michael Weaver, Mr. Robert Wiseman, and Mr. David Atkinson, who previously served on the Historic Preservation Commission, have all three graciously accepted another three-year term to begin this month and expire in May of 2023.
Thank you, Randy. May I have a motion from the Board or questions from the Board on these reappointments, please, to the Historical Preservation Commission?
Being part of it, I'll make a motion to approve it, please. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson, with a second from Alderman Turner, to approve the reappointment of these three gentlemen to the Historic Preservation Commission. May I have roll call, please?
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese. And... Alderman Reese.
I'm trying.
Okay, I hear you, man. Alderman Zaring, please.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you to those gentlemen, Mr. Wiseman, Mr. Weaver, and Mr. Atkinson, for agreeing to serve again. Moving on then, Council Bill 19... I'm sorry, let me back up. Like Harrisonville Caretaker Agreement. I bet that's you, Mr. Ratliff. Thank you.
One of the things, when I was first came to the City of Harrisonville, was looking at a lot of the different assets of the city. And it came up to me at that time, we was up visiting the lake, that we had an employee as a caretaker at the lake. And when I went to look to make sure that everything was up to date with that, the contract was not up to date. And so this is essentially taking the same contract. There's been some updates. The last time that it was done was in 2015. Since that time, he has another child and his cards have changed. And so we had to update that information. And essentially, as a part of that, I wanted to make sure that the Board knew that the trade-offs that were involved with that. So as you see in the agreement, we added in there what that value is. As well as in the agreement, we added in there additional information, such as if the employee decided not to be with the city any longer, this contract would be null and void at that time. And those type of things were added to this agreement. Also provided you an example of a monthly report that that employee turns in to show that he's maintaining the area and that he's taking care of that area. Instead of doing a year-to-year contract, we made it a three-year contract because it seemed a little bit more cumbersome if it was just a yearly one. And the Board can see that the benefit of having an current employee live on the property and to provide the maintenance and needed repairs is a great benefit for us. As well as the employee being there is an additional security to our main water source for the city. And then providing those monthly reports to us to show us any progression along the lake as well. And so with that, if there's no questions on the contract, staff recommendation is approval.
Does the Board have any questions of Mr. Ratliff? Seeing no questions, I would just entertain a motion that we accept this agreement.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zaring, with a second from Alderman Davidson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
And Zaring.
Aye.
And Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Thank you. So that agreement is approved unanimously. Now moving on to Council Bill 19.
An ordinance amending section 415.240 of the Code of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri.
Thank you. Mr. Ratliff, do you want to explain that to the Board?
Yes, in the last meeting in the City Administrative Report, I discussed with you all about this code. And that when I read it, it was a little confusing. And then the other benefit was that the city attorney read it and he agreed that it was confusing. And so we wanted to make it a little bit more clear on those appeals on the city engineer's decision. And based upon that discussion with the Board, we made that determination to go ahead and update it to what the recommendation was at the last meeting, which was that any appeal of the city engineer would go to the immediate supervisor, which would be the Public Course Director. Or if the city engineer is the Public Course Director, that it would go to the city administrator. Makes it a little less cumbersome and a little bit more clear and streamlined. So with that, there was no other questions at the last meeting. And this reflects the discussion of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. Questions from the Board on this? Okay, this is an ordinance.
Need to suspend the rule at the end of second reading.
Second, Dan.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson, with a second from Alderman Zaring, to advance Council Bill to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
And Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading, please.
An ordinance amending section 415.240 of the Code of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner. Alderman, okay. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 19 is approved unanimously and becomes ordinance 3494. The Cedarhurst Special Use Permit. Mr. Crowe, is that you?
Yes, Mayor Warren Alderman. This is a special use permit for a 70,000-square-foot Cedarhurst Assisted Care and Memory Care Facility at 2606 Rock Haven Road. Like the special use permit that was issued for the Cass Regional Medical Center, it is a permanent term due to the large amount of capital investment involved. We think the use is compatible with the hospital and the other highway commercial uses in the area. We think the project also benefits the city and the area by removing light. The application comes to you with both a staff recommendation of approval and a unanimous Planning Commission recommendation of approval for all the reasons that are cited in the staff report, the ordinance. As you can see from your screen, Tina Charlelville with the applicant, Dover Development, is with us. So Mayor, before we open the public hearing, I'd like to ask your Tina would like to say a few words.
Certainly. Tina.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Tina Charlelville. I represent the Dover Cedarhurst Senior Living. Our project will be a 73-unit assisted living and memory care community right next to Cass Regional Medical Center. Will be the first of its kind in the Harrisonville market. We pride ourselves on giving a highly residential home-like feel to our residents while also providing 24/7 nursing care and assistance with activities daily. So the city's been very hopeful in getting us to this point. We anticipate being able to get our building permit, I would say within the next four to six weeks. We're working on revisions of the city right now. But everybody's been great to work with and very helpful. And I just like to hand hand Mayor Bowman, Roger Crowe, and any other members of the City of Harrisonville staff that have been instrumental in getting us to this point. So appreciate everything, and that's all my thoughts.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would open the public hearing. If there's anyone attending who would like to speak, you may do so now. Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to Council Bill 20.
An ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, granting a permanent special use permit for Dover Development LLC to operate Cedarhurst of Harrisonville Assisted Care and Memory Care Facility at 2606 Rock Haven Road and establishing an effective date thereof.
Thank you. This is an ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion. Will you move this on to second reading?
Thank you. I'm sorry, didn't catch the second.
Aye, second, dude.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Milner and a second from Alderman Dorhoff to suspend the rule and advance Council 20 to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
And Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading, please.
An ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, granting a permanent special use permit for Dover Development LLC to operate Cedarhurst of Harrisonville Assisted Care and Memory Care Facility at 2606 Rock Haven Road and establishing an effective date thereof.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner. Okay. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 20 is approved unanimously and becomes ordinance number 3495. We welcome you to Harrisonville, Miss Charleville.
Thank you so much. Very excited.
Over. Moving on to Council Bill 21.
A resolution of the City of Harrisonville approving the preliminary plat of Bounty Hill, plat 1, lots 1 and 2, a 12-acre plat at 4221 and 4241 South Brookheart Drive in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, is that you again? You're muted.
It's applications from Graham and Sandra Gentry with the Gentry Fam Farms LLC. Fam, according to Graham, is not a typo. The family was, Gentry family was taken. So it's Gentry Fam Farms for the approval of 12-acre preliminary plat. There's two lots in the plat. One is about 3/4 an acre in size for a 5,000-square-foot distribution facility for BOSS Auto Noted. They're an Australian company that makes air suspension equipment for vehicles. And they'll be distributing out of this facility. The larger lot is for a little over 11 acres. And it is for Aqua Fresh Barimundi, who received the special use permit from you in December. On the preliminary plat are five buildings for the indoor commercial raising of fish, four greenhouses for the hydroponic growing of vegetables. They will start out building the first building, which will be for the fish, and then add buildings and greenhouses as the business grows. This comes to you with both staff and Planning Commission recommendation of approval subject to the stipulations in the resolution and the findings in the staff report. The, I think Graham and Sandra are on the line. This is not a public hearing item since the public hearing came with the special use permit in December. But they're here, may want to say a few words before the open discussion.
Certainly.
Graham, you're on.
You're on, Graham.
Okay. Hey, it's been a long process and I appreciate all the work you've done. And I just basically seeking final approval for the plat plan so we can put a permit in to get construction underway. So I don't know what else to say, but we appreciate all your hard work you've done.
Well, you're entirely welcome. I know staff has really appreciated the relationship that they're building with you. Okay, this is a resolution. Questions from the Board of either Mr. Crowe or the applicant? If not, entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We approve Council Bill 21.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner, and I'll take a second from Alderman Zaring. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner. Okay. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 21 is approved unanimously and becomes resolution R 013. Moving on to Council Bill 22.
An ordinance to approve the final plat of Bounty Hill, plat 1, lots 1 and 2, 12-acre subdivision at 4221 and 4241 South Brookheart Drive in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. This is an ordinance.
The, in the rule, but second reading.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner and a second from Alderman Dorhoff to suspend the rule and advance Council Bill 22 to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner. Okay. Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
And Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
An ordinance to approve the final plat of Bounty Hill, plat 1, lots 1 and 2, 12-acre subdivision at 4221 and 4241 South Brookheart Drive in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
There you are. Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 22 is approved unanimously and becomes ordinance number 3496. The public hearing for 708 Lindbergh.
Mayor members of the Board, the applications from John Coffey with Southview Properties to rezone and rehabilitate two very deteriorated threeplexes into duplexes that are west of Commercial Street on the north side of Lindbergh, just north of the new Dollar General, on Sutherland. John could have, John's with us here. John could have done this project with only a building permit had it not been for the fact that this on the north side of Lindbergh is still zoned like industrial. And being that the properties had not been inhabited and used as residence for a period of time, they lost their grandfather status and needed to be resumed to a multifamily. Staff, both staff recommends this for approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommended it. The land on the north side, we do not... The land on the north side, we do not think will likely develop as light industrial, which is presently zoned, it's very shallow in depth. The comprehensive plan calls for it to be either general commercial or multifamily. And we just think this is the first use on the north side there and it will probably be the, by be the ultimate development. When John was come talking to us about first coming in with his application, we did pull together a meeting with property owners on both sides of him, one's a private residency, others a welding shop, asking if they would be interested in rezoning at the same time being part of this application. They said that they were very supportive of what John wants to do, he would be removing blight in the neighborhood. And the welding shop felt like they had some theft and vandalism from not the best of neighbors who were, would short term break in and spend the night in the, in the triplexes. So they were very supportive of what he wanted to do, but they said they would not, prefer not to join in the application or rezone the multifamily because they think if their underlying zoning is industrial, it'll bring a higher price when the time comes that they decide to sell. The other thing that we looked at was, you know, the other approach that we evaluated was we could just leave these properties to deteriorate until a point in time when the city would have to order them to be razed and removed, but we thought, you know, who knows when the property, when the abutting property owners are going to be ready to sell? Who knows when somebody's going to come along and want to do a development along that entire stretch on the north side of Lindbergh? We've got somebody now that wants to remove the blight, rehabilitate the properties and we felt we should take advantage of it. Planning Commission concurred and that's why it's coming to you with the recommendation of approval. This is a public hearing. Before we open it up, John, you might want to say anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, I think you pretty well covered it. We just hope you get those nice and, you know, get some good residents in there. Thank you for helping all this.
Thank you, John. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on the matter, you may do so now. Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to Council Bill 23. Council?
An ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri rezoning 42 acres from M1 Limited Industrial District to R-4 Medium Density Apartment District at 708 Lindbergh Street and establishing an effective date thereof.
Thank you, this is an ordinance.
For a second reading?
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Dickerson to suspend the rule and advance Council Bill 23 to a second reading. Roll call please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Miller. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
And Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Thank you, second reading please.
An ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri rezoning 482 acres from M1 Limited Industrial District to R-4 Medium Density Apartment District at 708 Lindbergh Street and establishing an effective date thereof.
Thank you, counselor, roll call please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
And Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill 23 is approved unanimously and becomes ordinance number 3497. Thank you, John Coffey, you do a great, a great product and we're really excited to get that area cleaned up out there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on to Alderman and committee reports, Alderman Zaring.
Yes, board member, man of the mayor. I just, again, I'd like to kind of go over, since you went over the, you know, healthcare workers, first responders, all that, just to, again, thank them for what they do. A lot of what they do is what I call a thankless profession. You get a lot of fulfillment out of doing what you do, but you don't get a whole lot of recognition and thanks. Normally, those guys only get to hear the bad things that come in, so I do appreciate all they've done and hopefully we'll be able to recognize some of these people as we move forward and start moving out of all of the quarantine and all of that in the future.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Dorhoff.
Yeah, I mean, I commented a couple of meetings ago about pothole the railroad tracks over my rice chopper and since I just wanted to reach out and say thanks to the street department for going out and filling in that pothole. I've heard from a couple of people that were very happy not to lose their car in that pothole, so good job, street department.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Milner.
I've done nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Reese.
Oh, just not a lot, just stay safe.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Miller.
Just good to see everybody, everybody's well, that's it.
Good to see you too, sir. Alderman Dickerson.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Alderman Davidson.
Yes, I'd like to follow up just sort of kind of what Mike said or Alderman Zaring said about NFS and National Police Week. Yes, a lot of, a lot of times, all they, all they do is not hear the good things and obviously nobody does thank them very much, so I'd like to, again, congratulate and also glad that we're recognizing them in those two weeks. Also, something that you mentioned at the beginning in regards to tracing and keeping, at least I found a number of nothing else, I'm hoping that the restaurants will consider that. I think it will be very helpful to our health commission or health department, but for some reason, we do, we do need that information. And another thing that I'd just like to bring up, I'm hopeful that maybe our businesses will continue the utilizing early money for the elderly or those that are maybe immunodeficient so they can go and do some shopping where they won't be around a lot of the other public, especially since there's going to be a lot more individuals out and about. So those two things I would like to enforce and wish everybody health and safety for the next couple of weeks until we see you again.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Turner.
Just one thing real quick, I want to thank Brad for, I got in touch with him a couple months ago about BODOC trying to get the Purple Heart contract so we could get the sign put up on 291 if she come into town. Been working on it for a couple of years, BODOC's the fastest. Looks like we're going to make progress with it. I was able to get the sign from Al's Lodge and Rodney Jacobson has it in this possession, so since we're ready to get the contract, we can get the sign put up.
Excellent, thank you so much and thanks for your work on that. I want to just make a comment, I am intentionally wearing blue, this will be Wildcat blue with my Wildcat earrings, of course, and I saw that Alderman Dorhoff also has his Harrisonville gear on. We just want to do this as a tribute to our Harrisonville High School seniors. You know, they're going through a difficult time right now too, not being able to experience prom and graduation and all the wonderful things that go with that. So I know that there is a move around town to paint Harrisonville blue the week of, actually this week, the week of the 2nd through the 9th, and they're encouraging businesses and homes, if you have a Wildcat's life, hang it out, you've got to make a poster, you know, anything you want to do, just as a tribute to our high school seniors and I think also as a tribute to our teachers and administrators. Everybody has really done a great job through these last few weeks and I think that, you know, as a city, I would like to officially just say thank you all for that. Okay, report from the city administrator, that would be you, Mr. Radcliffe.
Okay, it's been very busy and if I have another video conference or phone conference or meeting about COVID-19, it'll be too soon. But hopefully we're starting on the downward trend of all of the issues that are going on with that and we'll continue to monitor the community to ensure the safety of our residents and the safety of our staff. And of course, if anything changes, we will continue to keep the board informed about that. This past week, Mid America Regional Council called for transportation projects. Harrisonville will be submitting two projects, one at Highway 2, the bridge there, that's been, I guess, a problem for a long period of time, so we'll be submitting that one. And in addition to that, will be the Highway 2 there at Plaza Drive in Winchester. So those are the two main projects. Of course, anytime you submit to mark on these SDP projects, I've been on the SDP committee for over 12 years now and the more regional approach where you've got more capacity of different people, not just in Harrisonville, but throughout the area, the score is better on giving us the possibility of getting us additional federal funding. So those things are always important on those type of lists. The code department, Chris Arthur has done a really good job of all the things that I've put on his plate, but one of them was, we want to make sure that the residents know that you as Alderman hear them when they complain about code issues or when staff get calls from them that they know about that as well. So starting this week, Mr. Arthur, working with Daniel, it is now online in the city's website under Code Enforcement, all the properties that we are dealing with as far as code violations. And so if a resident is saying to you, you know, I called about this and nothing's happening with it, you can direct them to the website under Code Enforcement and that is kept, it'll be kept up to date weekly on what the code department is dealing with and properties that they're dealing with and so that the community knows that you heard them and when you pass it along, as well as that staff heard them and that we are dealing with those properties. And so hopefully, as this moves forward, of course, you know, if it ends up in a citation issue, then we'll be able to see that on municipal court level when you're able to look that up on the website, different citation issues. But the hope is that most people that we educate and bring this information to, that it's abated in a, in a quick manner. So that's, that's something that is starting this week, as well as Mr. Arthur and his staff have been going around to identify blighted areas within the community and putting those property lists together for me and for staff for many different levels. One is for our ability of our police department to have those blighted properties identified. As you know, some of the issues that come up with the homeless issues that are really becoming more vacant issues, that the police department is well aware of where those location of blighted properties are within our system. But the other portion of it is for code enforcement to reach out to those property owners about getting those blighted properties taken care of. The third part of it is not just to deal with it as a code enforcement issue, but to start looking at it as an economic development issue as well. There is programs within the state such as, and Chris had talked about with me over the weekend about the 353, 353 opportunities that are there. I've dealt with that in some other aspects in other communities. It's a good opportunity to get some of those situations taken care of. And so that's additional what they're doing. And then the mayor and I met with builders that she had talked about, about three or four weeks now, I think it's been. And so Mr. Arthur has been looking at the comprehensive fee schedule. He just, this morning, sent me a very detailed report of that fee schedule and so I will add it to my insomnia list of reading at night and we going through all that information, but the important part of it is, we do need to go through it to make sure that we have good data to support what we charge and what the purpose of it is. Because a lot of times with a builder, it's being able to explain why we're charging it, because the important part is that Harrisonville is covering our costs when we do anything and it's not that we're trying to get anybody to try to, to make money off of them. We want builders to come, we want them to make money, we want population to move in and we want to make sure as we're doing that, that we're got a good support matrix to ensure that we're not doing that at the cost of the current taxpayers that are here. And so that's what we want to move forward with that. So those, I want to give kudos to Mr. Arthur and all these things that he's working on because they're not easy tasks that he's having to work on. And that's just a, a few of the main items that he's been working on, besides some other items that we've actually been working on. With that, as you know, we've had the NICSAL for this past month that has been deployed and been, and working and it's been very important, especially with this COVID issue, to make sure that residents realize there's additional information out that they can get ahold of. Daniel is also our project management person on the next rollout, which will be a C Quick Fix. And when this gets accomplished, every person with a smartphone will be able to go into their app store and find the Fix It Harrisonville app and on that Harrisonville hat and its app will be able to communicate with staff, communicate with the city and the city communicate back with them. Right now, Daniel's working with department heads to identify the drop down menus, so it makes it easier for the typical type of complaints that we may get or information that people may request as a part of that. And so hopefully, here in this next month or so, we'll be able to roll that out to the public so that it'll be additional communication tools that we're trying to get out to communicate, especially through even this COVID issue. It's an important tool to be able to communicate with the residents. With that, with the COVID issue, another issue that I've been speaking to our state senator about and our state representatives about as they're down in Jeff City, is the wayfare tax issue. For some of you that may not know about that, that is a statutory case that was decided a couple of years back for local municipalities and counties and states to be able to collect sales tax on internet items that are being purchased. And with that, it's been very strongly supported by our Chamber of Commerce as well as all of our businesses throughout the state and Harrisonville as well, because if you're a business owner and you have invested in our community and you've opened up a storefront, you are providing jobs to our community, you're donating to local causes and even our school district, then to have someone from outside the state to undercut you on pricing because they're not having to provide the sales tax. And so it's an unfair advantage to those that are selling online against our local businesses. And if there's ever a time that the legislature needs to step up and to get this fixed and corrected with the amount of people that are probably buying online today and not buying at our local businesses, and then we'll probably continue to do that and that will hurt our local businesses. This is an opportunity for the legislature to really step up and help our local businesses as well as help the state and the county and the cities to be able to help with some of the stopgap issues that we're having with the loss of revenue. With that, the, the representatives have said that they weren't against it. Our senator has said he won't oppose it, but that's something that if you can reach out to anybody on the state level to say that it's really important to our local businesses as well as the city. Missouri is the only state in the Union besides Florida that has not dealt with this issue yet. So all the other states other states and all across the, uh, the country right now are not going to face the downfall like Missouri will because they've already addressed this issue. Uh, it's been something that they brought to the legislature the past couple of years that it hasn't got anywhere, and so we're hoping that now they see the true necessity of it and that we can start helping out our local businesses. So, I just wanted, if you need any more information on that, you know, send me an email, I'll, I'll get you more information. But that's something that we're, uh, trying to, um, push with our legislators that need to be, uh, addressed during this session. As was said in, in the earlier meeting, um, in the work, in the work session, the, uh, hphilstrong@harrisonville.com, uh, for anyone that has questions, uh, what they can or can't do, or what the restrictions are, and the 816-380-8965 will be, uh, the number you can call in if you have any questions as well. And then this week, um, staff begin to, uh, meet with, uh, the online, we're doing online signups for, uh, their, their insurance that, uh, medical insurance that'll begin on July 1. And so, uh, most of the staff have set up, uh, scheduled times with United Healthcare to pick the plan that they will, uh, be participating in. And so, that started this week, and then, uh, Travelers, uh, was, uh, picked to, to the, um, the property liability and workman's comp. Uh, and so, with that, uh, around 32,000 savings in the healthcare portion for the city and around $120,000 savings on the property and the casualty, uh, for liability and workman's comp. And then, uh, at the, uh, meeting before, the board had, uh, given me, uh, the green light to go ahead and to seek, uh, an economic development, uh, professional to bring on staff to help our businesses, uh, especially, uh, during, uh, this downturn, especially navigating through the, uh, red tape of different, uh, federal programs, uh, that are out there. So, I'm pleased to announce to the board that, uh, beginning May the 18th, uh, Jim Clark will be the Economic Development Director, uh, for the city of Harrisonville. Uh, some of you might remember Jim, uh, in his, uh, previous years here, uh, with the city of Harrisonville. Uh, Jim, uh, comes to us, uh, with a vast knowledge, especially in these areas of the state programs, as Jim is, uh, certified and, uh, as an economic developer from the International Economic Development Council. He has a certification in economic development, finance professionals from the National Development Council, a certification in community, community economic development, and UMKC Block School of Business, and the Economic Development Institute graduate from the University of Oklahoma in the International Economic Development Council. And so, Jim has a lot of certifications that a lot of economic development professionals will have with a lot of these certifications, with the state programs that are going to be vital to help, uh, our businesses navigate, uh, through these uncharted waters. And so, he's also someone that can hit the ground running, uh, as a person that's well, uh, versed in, uh, the city of Harrisonville and the businesses here, and also with the, uh, programs that the state has bolstered, uh, through the federal government, uh, he's able to navigate through those as well. And so, we're going to be happy to have Jim onboard to help, uh, our businesses, and I think our businesses, uh, are going to be very, uh, happy to have him as a part of the team to help. And so, with that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, lots of good news there. Questions from the media, Mr. Minnick, are you on the call?
I am on, I have no questions.
Thank you, good to see you. All right, adjourn to executive session, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to RSNO 610.0213, hiring and discipline of employee.
Sorry, may I have a second, okay? I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to adjourn to executive session, roll call please. Roll call to adjourn to executive session. Mr. Jones, are you on the call?
Now can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
And Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned to executive session, good night everyone.